Good evening, everyone. It is Monday, January 18th, 2016 at 5:00 p.m. This is a meeting of the Oregon Village Board. I will call out the order and request roll call, please.
Cool?
Here.
Follig?
Here.
Brett Howard?
Here.
Carpenter?
Here.
Boudreaux?
Here.
Stetson?
Here.
Grenier?
Here.
Thank you. All present accounted for. Item three, public appearances, there are none. Going to go to the backside of our agenda to item number nine, report to committees for first in the audience. It's Planning Commission meeting for January 14th, 2016. Jeannie, sorry to surprise you with that.
Oh, no, that's all right. So it looks like Craig's here to talk about it, but I'll make a motion to approve the CSM for the Bergamot lot 504 contingent upon meeting the recommendations from Rupert Milkie's memo dated 1/7/2016.
No second.
Thank you.
And has passed the Planning Commission unanimously, and it looks like Craig's here to talk about it.
Okay, Craig, you're on, welcome. Good to see you.
Is it on?
Yeah. There we go. Just got it. Yeah, you're on.
No, thank you for moving me up. It'll get me home back in Milwaukee.
Good.
With regards to, I'm going to pass out a map so we can talk about lot 504. It is a multi-family lot. Thanks, Jeff. I had to run to Bob's copy shop on the way because I haven't been in your office since last Thursday, but...
Thanks, Jeff.
We have it in our pack at all, so...
Oh, good. You do have a copy of it?
We do have it, yeah.
Oh, okay. Great.
I got it right here.
So real quickly, obviously, we are just in front of you for a division of a two-lots into a two-lot CSM. But in particular, lot 504, like lot 505, that is in the light blue. These are both when the original Bergamot plat was created and recorded. These are both planned unit developments inside of Bergamot. The history here is what both 504 and 505 have been slated for was up to 15 units per acre. Lot 504 is a 6.72 acre parcel, so it would have been able to accommodate 101 units. And as I shared with the Planning Commission, our company by and large is a multi-family developer. About 90 percent of what we do is all multi-family, new development, and so forth. And certainly, over the years, we have watched the market very closely, and we have considered all kinds of designs on here, but pretty much have come to the point where the quality, the going three stories, and would probably be too costly for the rent that we could achieve here in Oregon. So it kind of, it's something we've been looking at every year and trying to do, to incorporate something, and maybe in the future, if we were not to continue with this, although we certainly plan to, that would be a possibility. But we started looking at it, and we came up with a concept along with our market study firm Tracy Cross out of Schaumburg, Illinois, we've used for almost 15 years. They're national in their scope. Came up with a concept. I love these different names for what we're doing. Active adult, empty nester, and the one in the report, which is wonderful, mature, move-down buyer is the description. So what we're looking at here, if you look at the eventual plat draft of what we're planning on doing, is right up against Bergamot Boulevard, lots 1 through 15 would be phase one, and lots 16 through 26. This is really not a small lot program because each one of these lots are almost 12,000 square feet. It's a, the width is going to be pretty tight. It's going to be 55 feet. I've worked with Mike Slavney. Mike is excited about the project. He's got experience down in Lake Geneva and some other places. And, you know, there were designs with 40-foot wide, 45-foot wide, but we are going to go 55-foot wide, so you can accomplish all kinds of excellent designs. And what we have planned here is the first level will be between 1,600 and 2,200, a ranch style. The design we're going to create will be very attractive. The whole thing is going to be architecturally controlled very thoroughly, such that we get exactly what we're looking for as far as a feel and a quality. We expect these units, you could build out the basement where you, that's where a lot of move-down buyers are looking for, the bedrooms to be in the basement and rec room so when the kids come home and so forth. So it could be anywhere from a 1,600, 1,800 square foot ranch with a small basement to, you could probably do about 4,400 square feet if you did a large upstairs along with a downstairs. So it's really a flexible project. We're going to try to disturb as little of the trees that are there and to do minimal engineering as far as site work. The site does fall off pretty significantly from Bergamot Boulevard down to Interlochen. So specifically, that is what our plan is at this point with regards to product, and so we will be back in front of you with a general development plan next month.
Yeah, just to remind everybody that the proposal behind or in front of us is just strictly a CSM to take the one lot 504 and divide it into the two lots shown. And the only sticking item that we've been discussing about, or discussing with this is the original lot 504 had an easement, a 10-foot wide easement through it. Kind of gone back and forth. We've talked kind of at length. It's kind of been the item discussed at most. It's shown as exhibit A in your documents there. It's just a 10-foot wide pedestrian easement as part of the original plat of the legends of Bergamot. There isn't really much information. We've kind of gone back and forth to kind of figure out. I don't think anyone really knows whether it's considered a, Matt, is that right, public, private? I mean, I think we're dealing with it as a private easement at this time because there was really never any dedication.
Well, I'm not dealing with it as a private or a public necessarily. The plat indicates there is a dedication of a sidewalk. The developer has requested that the village release that.
Yeah.
The only reason the village would release it is if there are public rights in it, so I assume there is a public interest in that easement. A lot of the discussion has been how to go about replacing it with an alternative easement and whether that alternative easement should be strictly private or public. I don't know. I'm not sure where we are tonight with respect to the new easement, whether that's going to be addressed tonight or later today.
Yeah, there was a, they did present an alternate that actually, if we're looking at the, if you're looking at the last page, I believe, and then...
Jeff, I have copies.
It's in here, it's in the...
Is it in there?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And if you see right along lot 26 and going into the golf course property, then coming back along lot 1 is the 12-foot wide pedestrian easement, utility easement. What I believe that says, eight-foot wide path. Part of this would also mean that they would be moving, in the future, the plan would be to move the path that would have connected Cypress Way and Interlochen Avenue a little farther up to kind of be more in alignment with where the pedestrian path would be there. I believe that at the Planning Commission, the feeling was is that it wasn't necessarily we wanted something of public nature that we would be maintaining. That would be something that would be the association that would be maintaining because it's primarily access for residents up to the clubhouse and pool area and everything.
Is the release of the existing easement on the agenda for tonight, or...
It is, I believe.
Well, it's just you're approving the CSM.
What's that, Mike?
We're just approving the CSM tonight, sorry.
So we deal with the easement at another time?
No, I don't care how they go about, what procedure they use for releasing it. There's been some discussion about what the correct procedure is, and I think that's more for the developer to be concerned about than the village because it's really a title issue for them. And I guess my position has been if the developer wants the village to approve a release of the existing easement and you feel that's the appropriate way to go, that's fine with me. And then, am I correct that any new easement would be addressed at a subsequent stage of the review process?
Though, I think what we were asking is any kind of approval would be contingent upon them incorporating a new easement in the future that would allow that, that would continue to allow that access across the property. I think the feeling was is they needed to get the CSM approved, and then the CSM allows us to be phased to lots. That helps them with their financing and moving ahead with kind of the plan and design with that. And we know that there's a lot of information that still has to come before the boards, and there's plenty of time to require that easement, that path in the future. Is that what you understood?
Right. I mean, yeah, we have a release all set. We worked with the title company last week, so that's not an issue. If this exhibit would be incorporated in the motion, that path of this nature to come, I think that would be best we could hold for.
They were just...
So we could do that, but I just talked to Matt. I mean, as they go forward with the GDP and SIP, that's where we could really be more specific.
The new easement, I think, could be addressed at that time.
Yeah.
The release of the existing, I suppose you could approve the release in connection with the approval of the CSM tonight. I think the, I think the developer needs that. Am I right?
It can't hurt. Can't hurt. But I don't, I don't think we need that on a private easement is what our advice was, but...
I think it clears it up a little bit. It just allows, it says that it's not going to be a sticking point with the village.
Absolutely.
And I think that whether that's...
I would appreciate that. That would help.
...released or whether we have to release it or not, I don't...
Well, I guess I need to know what specifically the board would be doing. I mean, I saw a written release of easement agreement. Is that, if you're asking the board to approve that, then they should be voting on that?
Nope, we're not asking...
Not asking them to do that?
No, we are not.
Then I don't think there's any need for them to do anything.
Nope.
Other than that, the engineer Rupert Milkie did request that the easement be shown on the CSM.
Correct.
But not, it doesn't have to be defined, it'd just be released or whatever your terminology is that you're going to come up with for that.
Okay, so we proceed as opposed to the agenda, right? Just with that motion second. Okay. Okay, so are there any questions or comments from anyone? Okay, so we have motion second to approve the CSM for the Bergamot lot 504 contingent upon meeting the recommendations from Rupert Milkie's memo dated 1/7/2016. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Great.
You're on the way.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. So we'll go back to the front. Item number four, approval minutes from October 12, 2015, the first budget meeting.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Any additions or corrections? Seeing none, all in favor of those minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, we have approval of vouchers in the general operating fund in the amount of $122,230.85.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Questions?
Pretty straightforward.
Okay, I guess we're ready to vote then, so. Can we have vouchers to approve in the amount of $122,230.85? Roll call, please.
Brett Howard?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Stetson?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Cool?
Yes.
Follig?
Yes.
Grenier?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. Item six, it's a time for community input. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the board at this time? Seeing none, we'll go to item seven, proclamations and announcements. Item A is board comments. Anyone have anything over here? I've been asked to announce to the public that we need election workers. You can call Village Hall at 835-3118, ask for Peggy or Candy, and they will get you signed up. So we have a great history of good election systems here, and that's in part because we have good election workers. So anyone interested, please make that contact at Village Hall. Any other board comments? Go to item B, staff comments, the February Monday night schedule. Mr. Grace?
Just another reminder about the schedule in February. It's a little different because of the election.
Okay, thank you. Item A, communication miscellaneous business. Item A, discussion of Village Attorney's January 14th letter regarding parking regulations, 7.028, restricted parking of certain vehicles and possible direction to staff. Matt?
Would you like me to review the letter or just respond to questions?
I think a little bit of a summary would be good, Matt.
Okay. So, as you know, we've been working on two different things, kind of on parallel tracks recently. One of the things we've been working on is revisions, kind of a comprehensive update to the village's sign regulation. And one of the issues we were looking at in connection with the sign regulations is the trailer that's been parked with the gun store sign on it. And we were looking at that in connection with the sign regulations because there is signage on the trailer, and there have been some questions asked about it. We, I think at a joint meeting of the Planning Commission and Village Board at the staff level, we're suggesting that if there is a desire to address that, it looked to us like the appropriate way to do that would be through the village's parking regulations. Interestingly enough, on a separate but somewhat parallel track from a timing perspective, I was working on the village's parking regulations. And in the course of doing that, I came across a provision in the existing parking regulations, which is cited in the letter, which says, as I read it, a variety of types of vehicles are currently prohibited from being parked on public streets, including trailers. And so I believe the current parking regulations already prohibit the parking of trailers on public streets. As I indicated in my letter, I was rather surprised to find this because when I was first involved in a conversation about this back in 2012, as I recall, the chief of police had been looking into it, former chief of police Doug Pettit, and had reported that he had looked into the matter and come to the conclusion that parking the trailer was allowable under the village's parking regulations. We didn't independently go into the process of checking his work at that time. We assumed that he was correct. And so I was surprised to see it. So I think, I had some discussions with Mike and Jeff last week about where to go with this, and our thought was we needed to bring it to the board. Because of the way that this has unfolded historically, we thought the board would want to consider a number of options perhaps in terms of how to go forward, including possibly trying to get a better handle on how prevalent the kind of parking is that's at issue here. The ordinance refers to motor trucks that weigh more than 8,000 pounds, truck tractors, road tractors, tractors, trailers, semi-trailsers, school buses, mobile homes. My guess is that we don't have a whole lot of mobile homes and school buses parked on the streets. Seems like trailers maybe are the issue, and so one of the thoughts we had was, do you want to try and get your hands around how prevalent this is, where it's happening, before you make any decision about what to do? And I know, I think Mike talked to Chief Yule about whether the police department could try and assist you with that. But then, once you've got your hands around the facts, and you have a sense of what's going on in regard to trailer parking, I think you're going to see three options ultimately. One, you can keep the ordinance as it is and take appropriate actions to let people know what the ordinance says, and hopefully folks will voluntarily comply. If not, you can take appropriate enforcement action. The next option would be to consider making some adjustments to the ordinance, depending on, you know, what you learn. You might decide, well, trailer parking in some areas seems to make sense and other areas doesn't, or maybe you want to modify what kinds of vehicles are regulated in some way. So we could be looking at tweaks to the ordinance. And third, you could get rid of it altogether. Any of those things listed, you could park them on streets. So I think that's kind of ultimately where the board would be headed in terms of options. Our goal tonight was to just bring this forward so that you know what the situation is and could have a discussion about where you want to go with it.
I would mention before we start, and I think we're going to probably end up referring this to public safety for more discussion, but I met with Mr. DeRozzo Friday afternoon at the shop and talked, and the trailer was not out there, and he said he was doing some other, correct me if I'm wrong here, Steve, some other types of marketing to see what impact that had, talking to customers, that type of thing. Was a trailer out there at all last week? Yes, I thought. It was gone all days last week, and he's working real hard to document and get data to see what impact that has. So where that goes, we don't know, and he won't know for a while either, but, so that was one thing that came out of our conversation, which I felt was productive. So, because I would suggest that we, you need kind of initial question from Matt right now, and then get this to public safety for further comments.
I think I'd like to ask you to do a little bit of research and try to get a sense of why that, why that verbiage is in the parking regulations to begin with. Is that something that was, that's rather common in communities, in cities? Was it a one-off type situation specific to Oregon? That would help me think through it.
Well, I had the same thought, and we did, I had one of my associates last week look at ordinances from communities around Dane County, sent Mike a copy of what we found. I looked at it quickly, and my takeaway was that, first of all, every community's ordinances we looked at deals with this in some way, restricts parking of certain kinds of vehicles that are similar to the list we have in our ordinance. They're not all exactly the same, so there is variation there. So, and so it's my impression that it's quite common for communities to restrict parking of certain kinds of vehicles on public streets, and exactly what the parameters are. My suggestion would be we get that packet of materials to Public Safety Committee. And we can, we can go, I mean, I think we looked, we sent you maybe six or seven different ordinances from around Dane County. You can take a look at those. If you want to go beyond that, you can certainly do that, see what the variation is, and exactly why communities have decided that this is an appropriate area to regulate. I mean, I'm not really an expert on exactly why. I mean, you can imagine why communities don't want to have certain kinds of vehicles parked on the streets, you know, tractors, school buses, mobile homes, even trailers. Some folks might say trailers. I don't, I don't know whether it's public safety related, aesthetics related. My guess is there's a component of aesthetic consideration there. There's a question of, you know, what neighbors like to see parked on the street and don't like to see parked on the street, you know? But those are, I think, are judgments that communities have made, and clearly, the ordinances we've looked at, most communities have done something about this. Again, they haven't done it all exactly the same way in every case. So I think we can, we're certainly happy to get to you all the different examples we've already found, and if you want more, we can do that, and then your committee can start to have this conversation of what makes sense for Oregon.
Thank you.
In the meantime, we're not going to enforce the ordinance. We want to find out what's going on, look at these ordinances. I think that's a good point, Jeff. Let's get some more information and look at from other communities, and then public safety will get that started. Eric?
Yeah, my comment is those communities that have this ordinance...
Yeah, or something like it.
Or something like it, similar. Can we check with their police department to see if they enforce it? Because based on the way the ordinance is written, the company that I currently work for and my own business, every job I would do in the village, I'd be in violation of it. Because you're only allowed for 30 minutes. And some of the times...
Without a special permit.
Right. And some of the times, we're parked a trailer there for a week plus.
Yeah.
So I'm just, you know, it was based on the comments that the Planning Commission members made, I think it should be repealed personally and not even be there. So, but I'd like to see if they enforce it.
Who do you want to do that? Do you want that to be something your internal staff does, or...
I can have Brian do that.
Yeah, Chief Yule could do that.
You know, my guess is that, like many, like many things, you know, enforcement is going to be discretionary and complaint-based. And so my speculation would be if there was another community that had an ordinance exactly like this, the police department would probably exercise discretion if they see somebody on a job and their trailer's being used in connection with that job, they'd probably drive right by. If they see a trailer, if they get a complaint from a neighbor that says, some guy's parking his trailer in, you know, in front of the house 24/7 all the time, it's an eyesore, do something about it, and they'd probably do something about it. Just because that's how, I mean, that's just the nature of enforcement is complaint-based and circumstance-based. So, of course, I don't know what you're going to find. I don't know what your police department's going to find when they start calling around. But Mike will have Brian check into it.
Yep. Anything else to bring up tonight before it goes to public safety? Yeah, Stevie, come with the microphone, please.
So here we are again tonight talking about meeting and my company, and I got some questions I'd like to ask. At our last board meeting that I was at, I thought everything was settled and everything was taken care of. And now I get a little love letter here from Matt, the attorney, that says that I'm in violation of the ordinance, correct?
Yep.
Okay. And it mentions that my name six times in your love letter, correct?
I didn't count, but I'll take your word for it.
Count them.
Let's just call it a letter, please.
Yeah.
We'll call it a letter then, that you mentioned my name six times in this letter. Okay?
Okay.
So it's all about me and my company and my trailer, correct?
Yours is the only trailer I know of that's part of that.
Perfect. Okay.
Now Eric's too, so Eric, count yourself six times.
Well, his name wasn't mentioned in this letter, mine was.
Every time it says your name, let's add Eric's to it.
How much did this letter cost the village?
I don't know. I haven't sent the bill yet.
You're going to send a bill to the village?
Probably.
Yeah, that's how it works.
Okay.
What's the point?
Well, as a taxpayer, I'm asking, how much does it cost?
I was asked to give an opinion, and I did.
Okay, perfect. So in this letter, under these restrictions, it says, "No person shall park a motor vehicle having a licensed gross weight of 8,000 pounds or more." And then you mentioned the truck tractor, the road tractor, the tractor, the trailer, semi-trailer, the school bus.
Or mobile home.
Or mobile home. And you got 30 minutes to park it there to unload, correct?
That's what it says.
Okay.
Unless you get a permit.
Unless I get a permit.
Right.
So then it also goes on to state that former police chief Doug Petty okayed it, and then he looked into it.
That's my understanding.
Correct. And in the letter, it says that Chief Petty okayed it and that I illegally parked.
I think he even went and told you that.
Correct, he did.
Yep.
So what's the problem?
Well, he was an air-based ordinance. He can't overrule ordinances.
Well, that's not true because...
Now we're trying to sort it out.
Because my truck is 4,800 pounds, and my trailer is 2,120 pounds, which comes to 6,920. So I don't even fall into this.
Well, that, that's not how I read it.
Well, it says it right here.
Let's, let's not argue about this tonight. It's going to go to public safety to talk about. We have options. We want to get some data.
Steve, I'm not here to argue...
But that's kind of where it's going.
Because at our last meeting, I had a solution, and you and I had talked about it on Friday, and I am going to honor what you and I talked about. I'm just bringing it to the board's attention that your attorney is accusing me of illegally parking my vehicle.
Actually, he's not accusing you, Steve.
He mentioned my name six times in this letter.
I realize that. He's going off the ordinance that exists that we were not aware of prior to the last meeting.
Exactly, you're not.
And how that found. Now I found it.
But now I'm telling you that I don't need into that area.
So we need to deal with this board, and it's bigger than you. It's Eric and several other trailers around town too, I'm sure. So we'll look at that big picture and how we handle it.
So according to this, Steve, it says anything over 8,000 pounds, that means my personal pickup truck, when I park it on village streets, is illegal. How many pickup trucks are in this village? A lot.
No idea.
A lot. So that means every pickup truck that is over 8,000 pounds will illegally be parked on village streets.
I didn't write it, Steve. And the other thing, Steve, is my advice to the village to not enforce this ordinance against you or anybody else until the board has had an opportunity to look into what it wants to do, figure it out, and make a decision. So, I know what, I'm not trying to be, I'm not trying to pick on anybody. I'm saying I identify...
You picked on it because you put my name in here six times. You picked on it because you put my name in here six times.
It was your trailer that brought this up, Steve. He's not trying to pick on you, Matt doesn't pick on people.
I understand that, Steve, but we we solved this problem a month ago.
Well, we have an ordinance on the books that we need to take a look at to be sure that others are, it's going to work too, based on what we come up with. We'll look at other ordinances like Jeff mentioned and we'll proceed. I said the issue is bigger than your trailer. Now we have to look at it in that respect.
My name is brought up six times on this. I feel it's my job to come in front of the board and voice my opinion.
Yeah.
That I don't fall under this restriction of.
And you've and you've done that.
Good.
And you'll get notification on the public safety meeting, it's the fourth Monday of the month.
Next Monday.
Yep, so it's next Monday.
Good.
So you'll get notification on the time and that type of thing too and and that committee will be talking about it.
Good.
Okay, thank you.
That, thanks.
Yeah. Okay, anything else from the board on this?
I have noticed other vehicles parked over by Cusack Parkway, for example, and Market Street, there are other incidents. So looking into it, having the police check it out would be, I think, very helpful.
Yeah, I do too. Yeah, it's not just a one-vehicle thing.
No, and I think this is the the right way to go about looking into this issue.
Yeah.
And I'm sorry Steve left because I, my comment is, you know, when we were talking to him last meeting, we didn't know this ordinance even existed.
Right.
And we weren't trying to single him out by any means. And now that we know it's in existence, we have to decide if we, you know, one of the outcomes of this might be we decide to repeal this.
Yeah, that's, Matt gives three outcomes that we can look at.
So I mean, it isn't, I'm sorry again, he's gone because I just, I would like to reinforce the fact that we're not trying to single him out for for any.
Right.
I know I have a comment too. I know that there's campers parked out on the street, people will bring them when they come back from Florida for the summer here. There's campers and they're not supposed to be parked on the street, on the street either.
Yeah, we'll be talking about all those things going forward at public safety, so. Next Monday, come right up. Any other quick thing before we move on? Anything else from staff?
I said.
Okay, thank you. So item B is a letter from Department of Transportation on Highway 14 project update. Think what's going here, they've called off the major redevelopment and they're going to just kind of rebuild that highway a little bit, leave it right where it is.
I had to reread this a few times after all the meetings we've had and I think this is a reflection of funding issues.
Oh, yeah, that's what I thought, I read it too.
And I, let's see what happens.
Yeah.
You know, the board realizes they say to occur in the early 2020, so let's see what happens after the next couple of annual budgets.
Yeah.
And something about this, any of the people who lived on that road did get the letter too, this letter.
I'm sure it makes them really happy because they didn't, you know, because the easement, the permanent easement is a shift of the road.
Right.
So this will make them happy, but I'm just surprised after all, I've been here a few years now and this has been studied over many, many years and their their goal was to put the road in the permanent corridor. So I was really surprised when I saw the letter.
Yeah, I was too.
But their decision.
Yeah.
Mike, I couldn't understand one of the sentences in this letter, maybe you can.
Sure.
Explain it. In the third paragraph, the last sentence, "Alternatives to construct a new highway alignment have been postponed."
Yep.
The alternatives would have been what?
So they, so they're not going to do the, they're not going to do the new highway.
So it's going to be in your same alignment as it is now.
Yeah, but they're going to resurface it.
Resurface, okay.
Yeah, some of it on a different location and.
Probably improve widths in certain areas, kind of do safety improvements is what I understood along the route, along the existing route.
So when they, when they initially lost funding from the state, they were trying to get it to be classified as a federal highway. Then they would fall under a different funding source at the federal level that that must have fallen through, so they don't explain that in here. So but I was just shocked after all the studies they've done and all the, and they have, they've purchased the permanent right away, I think back in the 70s, I believe, so, yeah.
Yeah, we had meetings here with big boards and middle school stuff, so.
So that's an update for the board.
Any other questions? On to item C, which is information on only the fundraiser for Brooklyn Veterans Memorial. And they have a fundraiser planned for March 5th, 2016 in the Oregon High School Performing Arts Center. Tied into recognition and so on to the men and women who have served our nation in the armed services. And there's information, if you go online to the Brooklyn Veterans Memorial, you'll find information about this for people who are watching. Anything else we need? Okay. Item D, discussion possible action regarding HAC Sports Page liquor license and refund the 2015-16 license fee of $600 that's tabled until our February 1st board meeting. Item E, review of investments, connection fees, impact fees and billing permits. Questions here? Comments?
Well, it's nice to see Oregon growing.
I wanted to make sure the board saw the total value for the year. He's never commenting and that that's going to be very nice for future budgets.
Yeah.
People watching, it's a, it's $28 million compared to 17 in 2014, so.
Yeah, it's about $11 million, so that's a big plus.
So that will hit the 2018 budget, right, it's always two years delayed. Because this is as a one.
And a lot of it's in single-family homes, you know.
That's a, that's a good year for us, 50.
Yeah, and then, you know, the multi-unit, this duplex and four-unit growth.
The bergamot.
Is right there too, so it's, it's not big, giant, multi-unit construction, it's smaller.
It's, it's basically, it's bergamot, which has been great for the village, it's worth its value, yeah.
Okay, we'll go on to item F, youth center fourth quarter information. This information are packaged, so it's available to those watching online. Basically, it outlines a number of persons, kids who attend that, what they do, they have a large variety of activities for kids and it continues to be a really good place for kids to take part in as they grow up, so.
I want to, I want to thank Diane for sending this again.
Yeah.
She's been doing this every month, I think, hasn't she?
A quarter, quarterly.
Every quarter.
I did.
You know, it lets us know exactly how busy that that center is.
Yeah.
It's been a great resource for children of the village.
Yeah, certainly has been. It's been there about 15 years now. I would guess something like that, so that's a longstanding youth center, so it's great.
I remember when we, that was the EMS building, wasn't it?
Yeah.
And when EMS moved to the current location, we were wondering, what are we going to do with that thing? As it turned out, it's serving a great service to the community.
Yeah, good. So item 10, as minutes not requiring action, there is none. 11 unfinished business, there is none. 12 new business. Item A, we have approval pending new operator licenses, these have been approved by the police department. At QuickTrip number 372, it's Pamela Laffaholtz and QuickTrip 302, Alex Meredith and Tori Brummond.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Item 13 lists future agenda items that will come our way, they're also therefore online for anybody viewing. Item 14, the village's board may adjourn to closed session during the meeting pursuant to Wisconsin Statute, section 19.851E. To discuss a possible use of tax increment financing in TIF 4 for a hotel, to consider requiring an option on property in TIF 4 for possible development. And to discuss the village acquiring 159 South Main Street for constructing a parking lot. We will adjourn from closed session.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Grenier?
Yes.
Folic?
Yes.
Brett Hauer?
Yes.
Udro?
Yes.
Google?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Stacey?
Thank you. We'll go into closed session. We'll stay here, unplug our mics and we'll adjourn. Yep. Thank you. We'll go into closed session, we'll stay here, unplug our mics and we'll adjourn.